Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Tiger Twalton School District Board of Directors. Welcome, everybody, and thank you to Vice Chair Irvin for taking my place while I was vacationing my brains out. We met earlier this evening in a work session to discuss our school continuous improvement plans, and we'll have a board report on that later in this evening's agenda. So we will start with approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
We do have one change to the agenda. We have, we had some late submissions for the public comment, and so those were added to the agenda after we originally sent the agenda out to the board. So they're reflected in the, Jade, I believe they're reflected in the most recent agenda that's been updated online. Yep, all right, so we're all squared away.
So then our agenda and consent agenda tonight consists of the Human Resources Report and the second reads of the board policies and the updated agenda item as discussed.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. It's been moved by Vice Chair Irvin, seconded by Director Miles, that we approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Well, now move on to my favorite part of the evening, our recognition and good news. We have tonight a double feature, so we'll start with Alex Pulaski and talking about Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and student representatives. I'm joined tonight on my right by Ainsley Adams from the Tiger Chamber of Commerce and Crystal Allen, who leads TTSD's current technical education efforts. And from FOT and Company, we have President Michael Fiori and Ellie Hughes, who leads business development. This building you see up on the screen, we drive by it if you work at Hibbert every single day on 72nd Avenue, and for more than 75 years, FOT and Company has been fabricating steel structures for industry. They have huge lifts and drills and presses and sparks flying everywhere on the inside. I'm sure Michael and Ellie could probably talk for hours about all the giant projects coming together inside those big walls. But tonight, we're here to talk about the bridges that FOT and Company are building in this community, particularly at TTSD. Next slide. These are the company's core values, and they bear reviewing particularly some that I've highlighted in red, and they'll help lend a little context to what you'll hear about later tonight, particularly long-term relationships and working as a team and always producing work that makes them proud. Next slide. Earlier this year, FOT's team volunteered for some work at our schools during the summer. Their volunteers did cleanup at the Bridgeport Heritage Garden. They also did some major cleanup at Durham's Garden during the summer, and since then, they've agreed to adopt Durham Garden, and Lisa Burton from our team helped coordinate that work. And there they are, out given a part of their day, a long part of their day to cleaning up our schools. Next slide, please. Here's a few more photos of that Durham cleanup. Next slide, please. Thank you. In late August, I got an email from Megan DeSabo. She's the CEO at the Tiger Chamber, and it turns out that Mr. Fiori heard Dr. Dosanata speak at an event. He liked what he heard, and he was interested, and Mr. Fiori was interested in creating some internships for three of our local TTSD students. These part-time, paid internships in IT and finance could later lead to full-time employment. Of course, we were thrilled, and over the past several weeks, FOT's team has been working with Chris on an interview process. And Chris, I wonder if you could give us a short update about that process?
Sure. Thank you. So I partnered with Ellie on developing a system, and we identified, or we put out this opportunity, which came with a job description that very clearly outlined the ask, and it was, you know, an opportunity for students to connect to the professional world and see their professional skills that they've been developing be valued. And we solicited applications. We had to take those applications and, you know, lower them down to a number that was reasonable to be interviewed, and ultimately selected six students for an IT internship and five students for an accounting finance internship. And those interviews will actually be happening this week, so I'm excited to hear about the next steps.
Next slide, please, Thor. And one more. So this is actually not their motto. I forget what it is.
I'll share it.
Okay.
We fuel growth through service.
Oh, he's saying we feel, we fuel growth through service. But I think this would be a pretty good motto for FOT and Company, because not only did they clean up some of our school gardens over the summer, not only did they find a way on their own volition to find internships for three of our students, but a few weeks ago, Marjorie Yamoto-Green, who's Executive Director of the Foundation for Tiger Twalton Schools, she let me know that FOT employees had committed to providing extra resources over the holidays to 20 families from Creekside. They really do build bridges at FOT. Next slide, please. This partnership with FOT and Company is really breaking some new ground for us at TTSD, and we believe serves as a model for other public-private partnerships. As a thank you, we want to share with Michael and Ellie and all their team this framed memento, which celebrates their generous help, and it's got some unique artwork from the kindergartners at Mrs. Hag's kindergarten class at Durham Elementary. Along with those young people, I want, I'd like to offer our heartfelt thanks to FOT and Company. With that, I'd like to invite Mr. Fiori to say a few words.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Chair, and Dr. Superintendent, and all for having us here. I'm going to share something you don't know about me, which I cry very easily. Just like now. We're fortunate to work with a team of amazing people at FOT. If I wasn't Italian, you would know. I can't help it. This is how I was raised. We cry easily. Connecting to people is ultimately the core of what we do. Ellie's seen this happen multiple times. It's okay. It's, it's fueling growth through service. Service to each other, service to our clients, service to our vendors, service to our supporters, service to the community, service to people we support. The food drive we're doing for Bethlehem House, the gifts that we're arranging for some of the students, has allowed our team to serve and come together, and the closer the team focuses on what we can do, the stronger the team becomes. You know this. We live in work-in-competitive communities. The heart of our competition, the heart of our competitive success comes when our team can bind together for common goals. It's the hardest thing we do, but the most beautiful thing. If you ever see us on LinkedIn, and I have a small LinkedIn addition, I will admit that I love posting stuff. I never post about the bridges we're working on, because the bridges will get built and the bridges will be put into the field. The buildings will be built and the buildings will be put into the field. I always post about the relationships, the people. I wish I was, we're together, but it's just amazing, and I value this relationship and what we're doing. And I'm inspired that we're going to have some of your folks come in and get interviewed by some of our team as we were outlining that plan today. I'm just very thankful to be met with such perception. I'm thankful for the opportunity we had to meet at the West Side Economic Alliance event. I appreciate what the Chamber has done to create these connections, and Ellie, I am just so incredibly pleased with your development and what you've been able to do to bridge these connections. We're scaling that, too. It's a great line.
It's great.
Yeah. Thank you all. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything else?
I just want to say thank you all for giving us the opportunity to do this. It's great to see, go out in the shop and in the office and see how excited all the guys and gals get to just give. I mean, I've never seen them be so eager to do something, even more than build bridges, real ones, and it's truly just been such an amazing experience in the past couple of months, being able to serve you guys. So, thank you.
Well, my family's going to be excited to find out that I've met a guy who's a bigger crier than I am, so appreciate that.
I cannot help it.
We're going to take some photos here in a minute, but before we do so, I just, I'd like to invite all of you to enjoy me in thanking FOT and Company for their leadership and for supporting our students. Do you want to go around, and does anyone want to have anything they want to share?
Thank you so much for being here, and, you know, thank you for everything that you do for Tiger Twalton. It's, it's such a refreshing thought to have, you know, businesses give up their time, give up their, you know, their positions to be able to hire our students, and, you know, we hope that, you know, because our goal is to graduate students ready for, for a choice, right? Whether they go to college or whether they go into a trade or whatever they're going to do, we graduate them with that choice, and I'm so glad that you're giving them that ability to pick that choice with you. So, thank you.
You don't give up any investment. It's all investment.
Thank you.
So I'm the crier on this team, so I feel you, Alex knows this too, feel it deeply. I did read something recently that says people that cry really easily are like hyper-processing information and all of the things and all of the feelings and all of, all of the things. And so that's why then we feel emotions kind of deeply, because we're processing everything really quickly. So that made me feel a bit better, but yes. So I appreciate that and the heart around it. And, and I think too, having worked with Chris and kind of talking with some of his students over the years that he's working with, just the continued opportunities and relationships that we're building for these kids and to see how different partnerships can work and beyond just the real-world experience, which they do get, which is really important, but just, again, this is a community, and for kids to see, especially when it can feel really hard, and right now, it feels really hard for a lot of kids, but to feel like there are people that don't know them, there aren't in their maybe family or community circle, they're here for them, have their back, that are ready to kind of help them take those next big steps, but in ways that feel manageable and make them feel successful with the support of people on the ground at school, I think is really beautiful, and hopefully, this is sort of maybe the beginning of other, other businesses, and we do have other ones in Tiger, but continuing that kind of, that keep that snowball going, right? And that we really can wrap arms around so many of our students in different ways and our families and give them that CTE, that career experience, so that they, to what my colleague said, can kind of do what they choose to do after they graduate. They have all of those options, and they've had a lot of those good connections, those good networking opportunities and skills. So thank you.
You're welcome.
It's so wonderful to hear from organizations that the district has relationships with and to see that mutual, what is mutually beneficial. And so, you know, I keep hearing from you that you're thanking us and, and, you know, we're thanking you as well, not only for the service that you provide with respect to district grounds, but then also, I mean, I don't want to repeat what my colleagues are saying, but also, you know, with that investment, as you said, in, in students and providing them opportunities and then allowing them to shine, right? Like what they are bringing to you as well, and just, you know, this very holistic, mutually, mutually beneficial service that you are providing to each other. And so thank you for being one of those many opportunities and a great place for them to grow and shine and like, and bring all the skills that they are learning and then learn more with you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say I was, I was pleasantly surprised just to hear that when you were addressing the work that you did, that it was really people-first and relationships-first. That's something that's really important to us. It's important to me and my leadership, and, and when we think about kids' experiences here and our staff's experiences here, we want them, we want to put humanity first and know that they're cared for. And so just to, to hear that come from you as well, and, and know that we have a partner in FOT, that's something that we don't take for granted, because really what we were trying to do was just build people and invest in people, and if we do that with the community, then we have something really special going on here. So I just want to say thank you for how you all show up and for being a partner, and when I drive by FOT every day on the way to work, I just go, hey, we got friends right there. So I really appreciate that about you all.
Thank you.
I'll echo everything that's been said, but I'd also like to, I'm, frankly, I'm a little overwhelmed, because we have partnerships with a lot of businesses in the community. We do some legal things. You guys have a trifecta going. You're feeding kids, you're working to make sure the facilities are in better shape, and you're helping them with career opportunities. I mean, that's more than any one business I think I can think of in the community does for our, our students, and so it's, it's a little overwhelming for me. And I, I really do want to say thank you, and I know it's a mutual thing, and, and that makes me even happier, but it is that sense of service. We're, we're all in this for the service to kids, and to have a business that's saying, yes, we want to be part of that service to the community and to our kids is really extraordinarily touching, and so thank you so much for everything.
It's our pleasure. We spent a lot of time, probably six months, thinking about how we were going to, it's a 75-year-old company that's, we think of it now as a 75-year-old startup. It's been through a lot. The next 75 years is not going to look like the first 75 years, and we need to adapt. We spent about six months thinking about what mission we wanted to achieve, how we would define ourselves. Horrible at this. And that's what the idea of service, fueling the growth through service, because that's a message that resonates with all of the team members, all of the vendors, all of the suppliers, all of the customers, all of the engineers, all of the community members that we engage with. We're running ESL classes in the building to help so many of our team members that struggle with English. If we don't serve, we won't achieve. It, it is mission-critical. We want to pay taxes for another 75 years, so you're welcome.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. We're going to take a far now.
Let's do it.
Just turn right around. We got this, this kind of seems like a weird system, but it actually.
No peeking between you, don't you worry.
No, you don't have to, don't stand up. We're good. No, 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 don't stand all the way up.
You're fine. You're fine.
We all know how to find space.
I've got one more. Got one more.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you around soon. Thanks again for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
So, second part of recognition and good news. Dr. Un, top that. I think you can. No, you can meet it. It's not a competition.
Good evening, everyone. I have the great pleasure of introducing our Social Services and Community Schools Manager, Colleen McAnishy, who's going to share a little bit about our Family Partnership Advocates as part of our good news and recognition.
Thank you. This, that actually made me feel better, because I'm, I'm a second-hand crier and an easy crier as well, so we'll see how this goes, too. Yeah, so today, I'll be presenting on our Family Partnership Advocates, who are very near and dear to my heart, and go ahead and go to the next slide. So I just wanted to start with a brief reminder overview of the FPA position. So the FPAs, myself, our homeless liaison, social workers, and counselors, and so many other people, all work together to identify families and students who are in need and connect them with resources throughout Washington County and also our internal TTSD resources. And our FPAs are absolutely critical members of the Equity, Inclusion, and Multilingual Services Department, and they support equity initiatives related to family engagement and student access to education. Next slide. And so right now, we have 13 FPAs. We're in the process of hiring, rehiring two more, 15 FPAs across 16 schools, and our focus for this year aligned with the district is multilingual learners of English, really doing a lot of outreach towards those students and families, as well as our McKinny-Vento students, and then also developing welcome systems for students who are new to the country. For Student Support Services, this is a lot of basic needs-related things that people typically associate our FPAs with, so resource connection and supporting after-school programs. And then they also support family engagement with language supports for all of the different languages that we have in TTSD, different information sessions for populations of students and families, and outreach and communication. And then, just like the previous partners, we have so many partnerships with local churches, businesses, and our two cities. And then I also just wanted to pre-share that we're very grounded in board policy, ACC and ACB, and what stated at the beginning of our current strategic plan, which is in TTSD, we'll provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student. And I really think that our FPAs embody this. Next slide. Okay, so as I collected information from the FPAs, it was really challenging to choose what to highlight, and so I'm going to just do kind of a rapid, and this isn't everything either, but I'm going to do kind of a rapid-fire shareout of things that are happening at each of the schools that the FPAs are in, and I'll just kind of touch on the ones that are highlighted in green today. So as you can see, I have the names of the FPAs on here. Liz Baca and Nancy Pettit are two FPAs who are shared, so Liz supports both Alberta Rider and Art Retkin, and Nancy supports Byram and Mary Woodward, and she's actually been supporting Hazelbrook while we are searching for a new FPA as well. So they're doing really amazing work across these four schools. But at Alberta Rider, we have some new MLE-focused empathy interviews happening, and then Art Retkin, Byram, and Mary Woodward are really focused on addressing food insecurity in their schools, and I really want to lift, like, these, so many of the schools that I'm about to share have really stepped up in their communities and have done things on their own for their school communities, and so that's been really amazing to see the community step up for our kids. Next slide. Yeah, and so at Bridgeport, Suzie, with the help of the food pantry, Tuolotin Food Pantry and volunteers, they delivered food boxes for families who are scared to go out and buy groceries right now. Unfortunately, that is something that has been coming up a lot for our families. At CFT, they've done family information nights and listening sessions from doing services students might receive at school, basic needs, doing know-your-rights information for immigration resources. And then at Deer Creek, they have an annual gift card drive, and they actually get enough gift cards from the Deer Creek community to support families year-round. So that's a really amazing thing put on by our, by our FPA daisy. Next slide. And then at Durham, there's a lot going on there, and, but one of the things that I wanted to highlight was that they just recently collaborated with Bridgeport and Tuolotin High School to gather voices and create community between Spanish-speaking families and our superintendent. I think that was a really great experience for our FPAs also to be able to collaborate with you, Dr. Dos, so thank you for that. And then at Metzger, for the, for when SNAP benefits, we were not sure that they were going to come through. Families really, really stepped up at Metzger, and they collected so much food from their own food drive that they were able to feed 65 families with food and basic toiletries for their homes. And so, and I put some pictures in there of all the food that they collected. Next slide. And then similarly, at Templeton, they also started a food drive, and they have a backpack program, so they have little rolling backpacks that they are sending home with families every Friday, I believe it is, and this is a continuous thing that's going on. And then Tuolotin Elementary, in partnership with Tuolotin High School, they're offering English classes for Tuolotin families, and staff from both schools volunteered their time to make this happen and teach the classes, and I think that's actually happening right now as we speak. Next slide. Okay, so going on to our middle school FPAs. At Fowler, they have an annual winter well-being gift card drive, and that also supports families year-round. At Hazelbrook, they just recently started up a backpack program again, so we, while this position is vacant, they are still continuing it at Hazelbrook, and I think that's just a testament to all of the staff who are there, stepping in while we are filling the FPA position. And then at Tuolotin, as, as you may know, FTA, FTE for middle school FPAs went from 1 to .75 FTE, and I just really wanted to highlight, at Tuolotin, Blanca, she's our newest FPA. She worked so hard to provide Spanish interpretation support for the entirety of their family partnership days, and one of those days was like a 12-hour day, because that's what they like to do. But I am just really amazed and proud about how she jumped in to support this community as someone so new, and this is like in October, so like two months after she started. Yeah, really proud of her. Next slide. And then last, we have our two high schools. Both high schools are working on welcome systems for newcomers, including conducting interviews with every single newcomer, and they're planning on continuing that throughout the year, so doing check-ins, kind of having a case list. And then at Tuolotin High, they just recently partnered with Pueblo Nido, which is a, a local immigration advocacy group, and they hosted a virtual detention presentation and a family preparedness workshop with a public notary there to support families who may need documents notarized. And then at Tigerd High, we're also looking for an FPA for Tigerd High, but, and the, the staff members there have also really stepped in to support the students during that vacancy. But one of the things I wanted to highlight was they took students to get, who are eligible, to get SNAP cards and benefits, and that was a conversation between so many people about like, can, can we get students this, like, are we allowed to? And so I just really appreciate all of that effort to support those high school students who need the most help. And that is my rapid-fire, oh, and here's, here's some photos from Tuolotin High School of all the things. of all the things that were, that were listed on there. A lot of really great things going on there. And yeah, I just, I, I really want to express that our family partnership advocates are so, so, so important to TTSD. And I'm just here, I wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do this work without them. And I am just like, they're my people, and I am just so proud to represent them here today. So, thank you.
We welcome any comments, questions from the board.
I guess I'll go first again. I just want to say thank you for, you know, helping lead the, the advocates. I think that all of the FPAs do an amazing job connecting with the families, getting them access to the things that they, that they need, that they might not have access to. So I really appreciate everything that they bring. And that culturally responsive nature that they do it in is something that is very needed for, for our families. I know you guys have probably heard this story before, but when, when we came to the United States, one of our teachers was able to kind of come alongside us and, you know, perform the job of what an FPA does now. But, you know, at the same time, she was our ESL teacher. And so that, that advocating that she did for us, that welcoming us to the schools made all the difference. Also taught my mom how to, you know, advocate for us at, in the school district. And, and that just, like I said, that, you know, when, when I became a teacher, I mirrored her teaching style just because I wanted to provide that same thing for my, for my families. But, you know, the, the FPAs, they go out there every day and they, and they do that, and we really appreciate them for that. So thank you so much.
So I'll sort of not steal something that Dr. Un said at a meeting last week, but a little bit, which is this kind of seeing what our FPA program is doing is exactly what I think we were all hoping it would do and then some. And really, you kind of have these wonderful, important ideas of sort of how a program might work. And the, and then you need the right people in those positions, and you need just so many different things. And I feel like we have that. And so the meeting last week where there's so much happening. And so not only do you have a job and a position and a responsibility that was hard two years ago for other reasons, it is exponentially getting harder. And the heart for that work is getting, I mean, it, like, you, we saw it. We see it every time we talk to an FPA person that is out there in buildings, working with families, working with students, seeing all of the things. And so I just, it's a lot, like, it's really heavy. And so not only is it beautiful work and necessary work, and we should be all so grateful that we have the people and the people kind of filling in when their vacant positions, all these people wrapping around, again, for our community members, but also really acknowledging, like, they also, like, we want to wrap around them too, because they're holding all of that in this space for all of these other people. And I know that's a lot. Thank you.
Director Weston, did you have something?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to express thanks. Our students can't learn without their basic needs met. And so this is a really important program, and, and thank you for all the work that you're doing.
What you listed up here is a ton, and, and also, not everything can be listed, right? So, so what you articulated is probably just some fraction of, of what these folks are doing and what this program actually does. So, you know, great appreciation for, for this work and the community that's being built, which just, again, that can't be, that can't be articulated in words. That is, that is a feeling. And that is an extension of that heart and that, that, that service and partnership orientation. So thank you so much.
I'll echo all of those things, but I, I do want to emphasize what Vice Chair Irvin said earlier, which is this is exactly what we wanted our FPAs to do when we first started the positions. But it is so much more, and it is so much harder than we ever thought it would be. And so I want to make sure that all of our FPAs know how much we appreciate them. And so if you could, I've been, I see none of them here today, which is good, because they work their tails off doing much more important things than coming to a board meeting. But please, you know, let them know which minute on this tape to zip to, so they can ignore the other stuff and, and know how much we appreciate them and how incredibly important they are to our kids, to our communities. And when we were talking earlier about service, this is, this is them in a nutshell, right? All of our FPAs are service inside out, upside down, and they're amazing people.
And I just wanted to share, first off, just thank you to all of our FPAs. And with our FPAs, they have such a challenging job because there's no blueprint. There's no blueprint for how you show up and service to the community. So everything that they do is based on this unique skill set that they developed over the years. And part of that involves the work of learning our community and being part of our community, which so many are, and being adaptive. Just think about all the things that have hit us this year and how adaptive and how nimble they've been and how your department has been, Family Resource Services. And so that is something that we don't take for granted. That is something that is a true asset to our school community. And so I just wanted to say thank you for showing up for our community in the way that you all do.
Yeah, thank you. And then our request is that I know that we have a tradition of taking pictures, but because they're not here, we ask that we don't do that, because we're really celebrating them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much. And thank you for speaking so well to everything that they're doing, or not even everything, but some of the things. Okay, we'll now move on to our student representative reports. It looks like we have Tigard High well-represented tonight. So Edie, you want to go first?
Yes. For sports, these past couple of weeks, girls' basketball had their first tournament this past weekend. And from what I heard, varsity had two wins. There's a boys' basketball tournament coming up the weekend before Christmas break. And there's also a wrestling tournament at Mountainside that same weekend. Dance competition season is also starting. And this past weekend, we won second place in six A Palm at Rex Platinum Competition. And about two weeks ago, we won first at Reynolds Competition. And Tiger Rets, Callie Rutton, Izzy Reinhardt, and Amelia Tapia auditioned this Sunday at Toalton High School for the DDCA six A All-State Dance Team. And all three seniors were selected, along with only seventeen others out of the fifty-eight people who auditioned.
Last week, our NHS held their Winter Blood, their Winter Blood Drive for the Red Cross. And the NHS members helped organize this event. And anyone over sixteen could donate, each donation helps save up to three lives. And also, and donating also serves as volunteer hours. And there's also one coming up next year.
Sorry, sorry, can you slow down just a little bit? I just having trouble following.
And then yearbook, we got our critiques yearbook back from last school year, which, and we got a first place, a first-class award, which is kind of like two, two steps down from the national one. And then our paw print, which is a student, a lit mag, is, our deadline for that is next Friday.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for our student reps? Okay, then we'll move on to our superintendent board communication. Dr. Superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. You know, with so much going on in the district, it's hard to, to choose. Like, what are, like, if I have about three to four minutes, what are the things that we want to highlight in the board, in the boardroom? And so what I try to do in my report is just kind of capture something that truly tells the story of our district and tells the story of TTSD. And so, and also is, communicates a sense of transparency and accountability as well. So for today, I'm going to talk about just four things. And I want to actually start off with talking about our report card. So about two weeks ago, state released that district report card, state report card, showing how the state's doing. Then each district has one, and then it's drilled down into, you, by school. So schools can see how they're performing. And it's, and they, the report card shows how we're doing on the basic seven metrics that we're always, I think it's seven, that we're always measured on. So third grade reading, math, attendance, graduation, ninth grade on track, five-year completers, et cetera. And I'll show those in a second. And so I want to just show ours real quick, if you can go to the next slide. And so typically what we do is a big press release. And because things were more or less steady in our district this year, we didn't do the big press release. But we do want to be accountable to the public and let everybody know, first off, that this, this data is out there. For people to review, you can go onto our website and find it when you click on the dropdown of the About Us and then Report Card. It's always updated, you'll always be able to find it. But I just want to draw your attention to a few things at the district level. First off, we're staying pretty steady. So with our regular attenders, English, Language Arts, third grade, and, and math, we're down a percent. So again, not, no need to sound the alarms. When we don't see any big growth or decline, we start looking at that number in the center, right? So we already know that in our district, attendance is a huge focus. And that's based on these numbers that we already, we knew before this report was even released, right? We also know that early literacy is important as well. So hopefully next year, with all the strategies that we're using, professional development, we do have a new curriculum, some targeted interventions, we're going to see that, that number move, right? And then you can see that this graduation on the left-hand side, that's from two years ago. So our, our graduation rates from twenty-four, twenty-five aren't typically released until January or so. So that's from the year before I arrived. So if we go into the next slide, though, what I want to point out is what our schools see when they look at their data. And before we get too much into it, I want you to know that we do our quarterly data using real-time, real-time measurements using iReady and various site-based metrics. So none of this is a surprise, but this is what we see at the state level. If someone's thinking about coming to our school district, is a staff member, or is a family, this is a thing they're normally going to look at, not our iReady data. And so this is Metzger Elementary. Metzger is one of our largest and most complex title schools that we have. It's also a two-way immersion school. So what you'll see in this is that overall, the, especially with the English Language Arts and the, and the mathematics, even though they're at fifty and forty-two percent, and we know we want that number to do, to be better, there's actually some significant growth, the four and five percent, which is an indicator that we're trending in the right direction. So if I'm a staff member there or the principal, I'm going to say, okay, it looks like we're getting multiple indicators that are showing that we're having growth. And then as a team, what they do is look at what's working, and then they double down on what's working. Maybe it's the way that they're approaching their instruction, and they do an outstanding job with, or literacy instruction. They do an outstanding job, meetings to students where they are, and they have a great program going on there. And then with science equally, they'll say, well, what happened with science, and what can we do to improve that as well? So there's always going to be things to celebrate, and we definitely have those with English Language Arts and Math at Metzger. And then some areas where we know we need to focus on growth and what we can get better at. And then also, I want to show the range in our district. So go to the next slide, please. All right, so this is Art Ruckin. So Art Ruckin is a higher SES school. It's had a lot less students, it had about a hundred and twenty students last year. And so you can see their numbers in general are higher than a more complex Title I school in English Language Arts and Mathematics. They exceed the state in a lot of metrics, so it means they're getting most things right, even if it's a one percent or two percent decrease. Now, the thing that we really want to pay, pay attention to with Art Ruckin is science. They went up by twenty percent in science. So if we're doing cross-collaboration with, between schools, you might go to Jamie and say, what's the secret sauce in science? Now, there's always going to be a regression to the mean. And so they're not going to sustain a twenty percent increase every year. But something happened, maybe it was some magic that the, that the kids in that cohort, something they ate that day for breakfast, but they did something right. So to that end, we would go with them, go to them and say, okay, what, what kind of strategies are you using? And this is where you get collaboration between schools. So these are ways that we take data and don't necessarily say, oh, we're doing good, or we're doing bad, or this school is outperforming this school in this area, even though I know that sometimes our principals can be competitive. It's a way that we're taking the data and trying to do some sense-making on how we can get better. So just want to know that that's available, and I encourage you to look into it if you have time. And these are things that we also cover when we do our workshops around, quarterly, when we, we share with you how we're progressing as a district. And that's it for that. Okay, I have a couple, I know that was basically four minutes in of itself, so I'll, I'll transition quickly. This should have been a reports and discussion. I want to talk about elevating the voices of our students and our family members and our parents and community members. So over the last couple of weeks, we've made a concern, and you can shut this, or move this down. Oh, that was the picture, that's not the best picture, let's go to the other one. Oh, man, okay, well, let's just shut the pictures down then. So the last couple of weeks, we've been focusing on elevating student voice and getting the voice and input of our community and our fam, and our families. And my first year here, I, we took this approach where we said, hey, there's a new superintendent here. We're going to do community listening sessions, we want to get your voice. And we noticed in taking that approach, we got a pretty homogenous group that showed up, right? And our diverse communities were really missing in those settings. And so we're taking a different approach this year where we want to hear from our more diverse families. And so instead of saying, come more, come to this, this meeting at this time and this place, we're actually going to our FPAs and saying, where are our families' time are getting, where are they meeting? We want to meet them there, we don't want to intrude on their time, we just want to be our presence. And if it, if opportunity presents itself to ask some questions, we'll do that. So we, me and Alex the other day went to Durham, and there is a group of our Latino families that play Lotaria. So we got to play Lotaria, and then we got to just ask some questions about like, what's going right? And what we need to get, what we need to do better in the school district? And we had a really rich conversation. We know that there's been an increased concern around the ICE activities and the detainments happening. So we use that as an opportunity to, to meet with our PSOs. I know a couple of our board members attended that meeting as well. And it was really encouraging to see our community come together and hear the voice and concerns in ways that we can help support each other. And then just today, we started a campaign, or I don't know if it's even a campaign, it's just the process that we standardly do when we listen to student voice. So we went to Creekside today and heard from some students. That was the picture that you saw, Thor, you don't need to put that picture back up. And the picture was supposed to be me dominating a Lotaria. That was the, the real picture, but separate other time. So nonetheless, there it is, or at least having some fun at Lotaria. Thanks, Thor. So, but it's really important for us to get voice from our students, from our staff, from our community, from our parents, because when we go into the bond and boundary and strategic planning meeting, that voice matters. And we want to make sure that we're being good representatives of those that we serve. So I just wanted to, to share with you all that that's something that's really important to us. And we're going to continue to focus on raising, getting student voice and, and community voice. And then I'll wrap up real quick, just want to say that, you know, one of our main focuses is, or FOCI, is supporting our MLEs. And we look at it as a continuum of service, whether so, a student is a newcomer and just arrived and needs intensive language supports, or whether they're a heritage speaker or in our dual-language program, our two-way immersion program, or whether they're in high school and getting a syllabi literacy and in a, an IB program. We want to make sure that we are meeting students where they are, but also that we have a very unique vision that's evolving on how we're going to support our multilingual learners. And so we're partnering with Dual Language New Mexico. They will be here tomorrow, actually, to work with our, our building leaders and our district leaders on how we can update our vision and reimagine what dual-language education looks like for not just this year or next year, but for the long term in TTSD. So we're really excited for that partnership with them. I've worked with them in other districts. And I love that they come with best practices, they come They come with a lot of experience, but they want to know what our story is so that they could help us manifest what our, what our vision will be for supporting our, our dual-language learners. So our multilingual learners. So that's happening tomorrow. And then just going to wrap up by sharing that we're, we're looking for a replacement for Dr. McCall. The Assistant Superintendent position closed, uh, last week. We had about fifty applicants. Yeah, that was a lot of reading for me, I spent a lot of time reading on Saturday. So, and then we have drilled it down to our top ten to twelve. And so those interviews are happening, they're video interviews, and then we should have a position, the position nailed and the person hired and announcement in mid-January. So things are really moving along with that as well. And then I want to wrap up by sharing a video from our campaign around us telling our own story. So I don't think you'll need Kleenex for this, but you might, right? So this is our third installment of us just showing what's going on in TTSD and trying to capture how every student counts.
People come in all shapes and sizes. Disability is just one part of the human experience. They're just part of the community. Community is made up of different kinds of people. Tiger Twolleton is known to have a strong special education program. And what makes us so special is not so much that we have a prescribed program that students go into, it's the people. We do use evidence-based practices, but it's really when you bring people together, families, teachers, special education staff, and assistants, who believe that what they do matters, and they believe that all students belong, really powerful things happen.
Inclusion isn't just about putting our kids in the Gen Ed setting, it's about building opportunities for them to participate in meaningful ways that are meaningful for them. And for each kid, it will look different.
Each child has an individualized team that comes together to program for them. A critical part of all of that is trust. Parents trust us to take care of their children, both in understanding what their values and goals are for their child, and then also making sure their child's safe.
They instill a sense of safety. It has allowed Braden, as a non-verbal autistic child, to be able to communicate and type and talk and read. That, I think, is the most important part, because it's not about me, and it's, it's not about the teachers here. It's about Braden, growing and flourishing and being part of this world.
We started selling popcorn to work on life skills, to work on budgeting, to work on how to run a business and how to have a job. But I think overall, the biggest takeaway is that they are a part of our community. They're a part of our school, they're a part of the school community, they feel like they belong.
Inclusion is a belief system, and it's a mindset. You have to work with your community and respond and represent your community. And that, I think, is what makes special education so amazing.
And that is it for my report.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Carol, for the narration. Lovely video. All right. Board communication. Who would like to go first? Or does anybody have anything to share? I guess I should start with. Now, Director Weston, I don't see you online, are you there? There you are, you are. Would you like to go first, Director?
Sure, thank you. I hope you all had a lovely Thanksgiving, a time to come together to be thankful, a time for family, to celebrate a bountiful harvest and to honor the hospitality freely given by Indigenous communities to European newcomers. And for a moment, communities ate at the same table. What does it mean today to be part of the United States of America? Is it a flavor, a sound, a color? Someone characterized the Indigenous peoples of the Americas as somehow foreign to the United States of America. Criminal, less than, the cause of your thin wallet, your cousin's addiction, your neighbor's unemployment, your child's academic struggle. Well, I will not pretend that ripping apart the fabric of our community will lead to solving our problems. I will continue to support smaller classes, a robust economy, less reliance on educational technology in schools, more support for teachers, and nuanced problem-solving. I think about those who continued the tradition of dreaming of America, sought out a new home, and then put down deep roots. Consider a college freshman surprising her parents and younger brothers for Thanksgiving, but then instead surprising them with a call from a detention center. Joyful naturalization ceremonies ending in tears. A firefighter pulled off the fire line. Guns drawn around a local Dutch brothers staffed by teens. And now a local family, a coach who teaches our kids soccer, one of our students missing a parent. Join me in supporting a family that belongs together, thank you.
Thank you. Director Himes.
I don't have much to say other than I want to apologize in advance because I wasn't able to make it to the SIP round. And so I won't be able to share in that report. But I wanted to say that I was at a work meeting, which is why I'm still in a tie, or else I wouldn't be. But, but yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that that got in my report.
I don't have much. The only thing that I'm thinking a lot about right now is Senate Bill 141, the accountability bill that is going to impact our districts a lot, all districts around the state. I know that we're going to hear a lot more about this from our staff and everybody as time goes on. Just thinking about how we as a board are really going to have to learn a lot about quarterly monitoring and interim assessments, and what it means to have coaching and intensive coaching and, and all of that. All of these things that we're all going to have to be really familiar with. I am really thankful to be in a district where we get frequent, comprehensive, and thorough education on what our district is doing, how we are monitoring, what all of those things mean, and then transparency to the community about those kinds of things. And so as we go forward with these big changes to accountability in the state, just want to start saying that and putting that out there, because this is something boards everywhere are thinking about and districts everywhere are thinking about, and, and just something that's been on my mind. So I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot more about this as we move forward, because lots of stuff is happening in that realm.
Definitely.
I have a couple of things, and one of them is, because I've been part of that TAC force for this Educational Accountability Act. So it goes to the State Board on the eleventh. And what I will say is, and there is a lot in there, as Director Miles kind of alluded to, there, there's a lot with local metrics, with optional things, with required things, all of the things. And I think at the beginning, there was some current concern that the, the group would be primarily performative. So we're going to bring school leaders, administrators in a room, and like, but really, this is just what we're doing. And while there are some still really big questions, there, I think because of the conversations with COSA, some of the superintendent sort of hive mind meetings in a way with this group, the ORCA group, there has been some movement in a positive direction. And so a couple of those, and I will be really fast. They really are focusing on academic growth instead of like a finite endpoint. So they're going to be looking at growth. They are taking, instead of, they're using career and workforce readiness to be the composite total of CTE participants and career and technical education constant traders. And so that was a big concern when we're looking at the CTE program. There's some things when you're looking at educational service district programs, which I won't get into here. The multilingual proficiency now will mean the number of students earning the sealed by literacy or, or multi-literacy. So that was a change. And then some changes around the post-secondary readiness, which really focuses some work around our high schools and broadening that, the scope of what that means. So again, while we still feel like we wish there could be a pause button and have a few more months to kind of roll this out and really look at it, I do feel like there had, and a lot of people in the meetings felt like there were, in good faith, some changes happening based on what they were hearing, which I think was really positive. I think the next hurdle, which I think I am roped into being on this TAC force again, is actually, how do we do this? Because that's the other piece, right, that always comes with, what are the programs? So there's a lot around the interim assessments and smaller districts that have programs, but not on the approved list. And so how are we expanding that list? And so a lot of those pieces, but really, what does it mean if you make seven but not eight of those, you know, the metrics? And if you just need to make seven, then who's really going to go for eight? So there's a lot of pieces around that with how it will work, and then the actual financial burden that that will cause on districts that we are still really pushing for more information about. But I do feel like that's, there's been some headway, which was good. And then last week, we, Chair Zereshmied and I went to, or participated in a, a meeting with district folks, FPAs, and then a lot of our PSOs, PSA's, presidents. And really to talk about how do we support our families? How do, what can we help put in place and help PSOs kind of think outside the box in terms of having families feel safe when there is an increased ICE presence? And so it was incredible to hear really all the things that were already starting to happen and the conversations at every school that were already taking place. People ready, like, we have a list of people that want to volunteer, when are we ready to go? What's the plan, what can we do, what, when should we ask if we can do it, or should we just do it? So there was a lot of really incredible and powerful conversations happening. And I think, and we're just talking about this, really, if you weren't able to come to that meeting and you're a PSO person, definitely reach out and we'll, you know, we're going to be networking a lot of those folks together to kind of build this, this net of support and safety for all of our students and families. And so I would encourage you to reach out and see, if you're already doing something, what are you doing? Because we love to know that, and then if you aren't doing something but want to, let's figure that out. And that's all I have.
Yeah, that was an amazing meeting. It opened my eyes to just how much support there is in the community. I knew there was a lot, there's a lot, a lot more even than I had thought. I wanted to mention also the, regarding the Senate Bill 141, the Legislative Accountability, that I attended, the OSBA did a Legislative Accountability webinar last week that was really informative. Cassie Medina from ODE was on to talk about what it looks like for board members, what, what to expect. And so any of us, any of you, my fellow board members, who didn't have a chance to view that, it should be recorded on the OSBA website, you should be able to see it, I highly recommend it. I was really pleased to see that the ODE person was in fact taking feedback from the board members who were in the webinar about what do you think of this metric? And what do you think of that metric? And when the metric was like not so popular, she was like, okay, maybe we need to revisit this. So I, I am cautiously optimistic that there is still room for, for feedback to be taken seriously. And then finally, I wanted to mention, I've been in various meetings to prepare for our Washington County Legislative Summit, which will be January seventh at the Northwest Regional ESD. So please, I want to make sure all board members have that on your calendar. Super important that we, we show up there. It looks like we've got a really good turnout of state legislators who will be there. So it's going to be a great opportunity for us to talk about the accountability and how to make that work. But also, I don't know, maybe school funding might be something we want to talk to them about, too. January seventh, and it'll be at the Northwest Regional ESD. So watch your email, but put a, put a placeholder on your calendar, please. So yeah, busy times. Okay. Then I think we're ready to move to public comment. We have three people signed up for public comment tonight. But I wanted to make sure the board members know that you've got a packet of written testimony that was submitted. There's also some that will be online, and I believe attached to the board packet, is that correct? So make sure you've read all of those as well. Our three speakers tonight will start with Derek Lawson, and then on deck will be Perla Murphy. So if you could come on up to the front and let me find the instructions that I need to read. Okay, so you will, speakers will have three minutes. So please be brief and concise. You may speak on a topic not on the published agenda. However, the board at its discretion may require the, be submitted in writing. We reserve the right to refer the matter to administration for action or study. Speakers may offer objective criticism of direct district operations or programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning specific district personnel. And of course, any, any public comment that is derogatory, that does not fit within the guidelines of our policy ACC, I will gavel you out and ask you to please stop talking now. So please take it seriously, if I have to do that, please don't make me have to do that. All right, so when you start your speaking, please give your name, your zip code, and then the timer will start once you have said those two magic topics. All right, so go ahead, thank you so much.
Good evening, buenas noches. My name is Perla Murphy, my zip code is nine-seven-zero-seven-eight. I am the Assistant Director for Arcoiris School, and I have had the privilege of serving Arcoiris Spanish Immersion School for nearly its entire history. I joined in two thousand and eleven, when we were just a small school with a big vision, to open doors for students through high-quality bilingual education. Over the past thirteen and now fourteen years, I've watched this vision come to life. I've seen students grow confident and capable in two languages. I've seen families and staff, especially me, find a place where their culture and voices matter. Our goal in opening a new campus in Tigard is simple, to make this life-changing educational model accessible to more students. This isn't growth for growth's sake, it's responding to real community demand. It's expanding opportunities for families who want bilingual immersion. It's giving children who already live in Tigard and the surrounding areas the chance to thrive in the environment we've spent more than a decade building. I have seen firsthand how transformative our program is. I've seen students, whether timid, or struggling, or unsure of themselves, leave confident, multilingual, and ready to take on the world. I am so proud of what we do, and I believe deeply that our community deserves more access to it. Tonight, I respectfully ask you to allow us to bring Arcoiris to Tigard. Please approve our expansion so more students can benefit from the bilingual, inclusive, high-achieving program our families believe in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Our next public comment is by Perla Murphy, and that means Luis Samayoa, you're on deck.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Derek Lawson, I live in nine-seven-two-three. I've got two children that I raise here in Tigard. You know, I'll just echo the, the commentary that was already given, just to specifically address what it was that was discussed here. I think when the, the board initially declined the application from the school, there were concerns with the certain financial obligations, them being able to meet them, that was raised as a concern. Personally, I can't speak to that, as I don't have any familiarity with the school's financial condition. But I would say that there are parents that are committed to the success of the school, financial as well as otherwise. We all engage in fundraising efforts on behalf of the school to make sure that they do have funding throughout the year. And I know that the school also partners, and then of course, the state also gives eighty-five percent of their funding, I believe. So I'm certain that there's some manner of underwriting to make sure that the school could in fact operate and meet their financial obligations. So I would ask the board to revisit that. One of the other concerns was One of the other concerns was that there are potential conflicts with existing TTSD programs. To my knowledge, and I know it's been referenced here twice this evening, that there is some bilingual education at the elementary school level here, but my research leads me to believe that there's only two schools where that's done. My daughter did attend Charles F. Tigard initially before transferring to Arcoiris. And I can tell you that the process of an intra-district transfer within TTSD is itself an onerous process. It's not pleasant. So if anybody actually did want to take advantage of that, they would have difficulty in doing so. I did. So, you know, I would say that this really is truly something that could be brought into the community and that could fill the gap that is presently existing. And then the last piece would just be an apparent lack of public support within TTSD or, you know, within the borders here for, for the school, right? And I would say that I don't, I do not speak on behalf of the city of Tigard, but I volunteer for the city and I've been on several committees for the city, including rewriting the city's charter in 2023, transportation issues, and then also on the budget committee. So I encounter a wide cross-reference of, of people or a cross-section of citizens of Tigard. And when I do tell them that my daughter attends Arco, I can say that pretty much invariably the response that I do get is, that is outstanding. You know, I really wish that something like that was available within TTSD or within Tigard Tuolotin School District. So I would say that most people don't know that you, you do offer that, right? If, if indeed it is something that you guys are proud of, it's not advertised very well, and it would be difficult to find. So with my remaining 15 seconds here, I would say, please reconsider the application that has been put forth. We would like to see the school expand. And I live and raise my children in this community, and I know that there is a need for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Right. And our last speaker, Luis Samayoa, is that correct?
Yep, that was correct. My name is Luis Samoyah. I am the Student Success Coach, Student Counselor. My zip code is 97206. First of all, I want to say thank you. I found I'd come up here and just share a little bit of my story and how it relates to Arcoiris. When I was a kid, my mom and my dad, they worked a lot. So for me, I didn't get really see them a whole lot, so school was my place of safety. It was a place where I felt, where I could connect with a lot of students and connect with a lot of teachers who made me feel important about who I was. It was difficult because my parents also didn't understand really what it meant to be a student and also a successful student. They tried their best, and I'm forever grateful for it. Since joining Arcoiris, I've become, for the first time in my life, I felt like I wasn't someone on the outside, that I'm not an outsider. And, sorry, I might start crying. And for me, that's really important for students who look like me and that come from backgrounds like me. We didn't have teachers who also spoke Spanish, had tortillas, and had all these cultural dishes. Arcoiris is more than just a school. It's a place where students that look like me and sound like me can feel like they're also represented. And just by judging by the panel here, you know, it also shows me that TTSD also is a big supporter of inclusivity. And that's really important for someone who is chasing dreams every day. And I definitely believe that with the partnership of TTSD, we can also impact the lives, not just of students of various backgrounds and cultures, but also fill the void that a lot of us are missing when we're not at school. And this is someone who comes from Portland, and at that time, there wasn't a lot of people who looked or spoke the same languages as me. It's become a very, very important place for me. And as much as I, I believe I've made an impact on these kids, it's actually made an impact more on myself. It's a very special community, and I believe that with the support of TTSD, we can not only support the inclusivity and diversity, but also bring more of that magic that what I've heard and seen tonight into your school district. And I would kindly ask that we reconsider the application, because we can collaborate and make these days special for all of our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment section of our meeting. So we'll now move into our reports and discussion. Our first item is our reports on our SIP presentations. And Director Hamis, don't worry, our superintendent covered for you. So he's going to give, give the synopsis in your place, but appreciate your, your need to be elsewhere. We all have a lot of draws on our time. Okay. So we had, prior to the board meeting, we had a work session where we heard about the continuous improvement plans from five of our schools, Templeton Elementary, Tuolotin Middle, Deer Creek Elementary, Durham Middle School, and Art Rutkin Elementary. So our board members and superintendent sat in on those groups, and we're now going to give reports in the eh, three-minute range of what you heard, things that you connected with, the hot moments you had, things that you'd like the rest of the board to know about what you heard. So who wants to go first?
Me? I'll go first, okay.
Nose goes.
All right. I will be brief, but I'll pack it full of all kinds of cool things. I was at the Tuolotin table, Tuolotin Middle School with Principal Cosmala. And a couple of just things I would want to highlight, because she really walked through, this is her fourth year at Tuolotin. And so kind of like what her process was, knowing that there needed to be some big changes, and also how do you do that when you're coming in new? And so, and then sort of where we have been, where we are, and where we're going. And so one of the things that she's talked about that she's been saying for, since she's come in, but really drilling down on it this year, is this idea that all teachers are language teachers. So kind of looking at, you're looking at state report cards, there are areas that are, that would need a lot of work. And she had a lot of transparency, and this is, there are some areas where we really, we got to get to work. And so while last year, or two years ago, there was this big push on oracy in student talk, and then it kind of moved into sort of this year and then the end of last year, what are those opportunities to respond? Really helping teachers get these strategies for, how do we provide more access points to language? So it could be mini checks for understanding. It could be helping kids not opt out. So not just waiting for the kids that always want to raise their hand or answer, but really in a, and, and she said, as a caveat, you have to, you have to provide and create and build a trusting classroom, because you're asking kids to take risks. And so kind of building on that. So this year, folding in a writing focus and really helping teachers understand like the language purpose in everything that they are doing. And so she has seen, when she gets to talk with kids, and as a parent, I kind of got to wear that hat too, because I have a kiddo at Tuolotin. So it's not just you're learning some vocabulary words, you're writing a sentence, but you are writing a sentence, it was, you know, Gladiator times, and you have a word bank of 10 words, and you need to use eight of these 10 words, which means you have to know what they mean to have them make sense in a sentence, and, you know, take on this character. And so you're really building in another class who's doing Gilgamesh, right? So not only this really kind of intense or high-level text, but here are all the other ways that we're talking about social studies and geography, and here's all the other ways that we're talking about what would life there be like? And then, you know, so you're really, it's, it's really like weaving in all of these other disciplines, but again, focusing on that writing and that purpose of language. That was sort of like the language arts piece. Math, this is their second year of this teacher development group program. And last year, it was folks that wanted to do it, could do it, and this year, everybody's doing it. And so this again, is really more, oftentimes in class, if you think about math, you're doing a lot of your like private individual work. So what this is really teaching teachers how to do is how do we have more public work? How are we walking around and seeing how other kids are solving math problems, what you might have questions about? Again, less opting out of opportunities, and also more gameplay. So one example was a teacher brings his D and D dice, and, and every little table rolls them and creates a multiplication bingo from those dice. So really making it functional and fun and getting a lot of that sort of repetitive practice. And then in terms of sort of the culture, climate, and ICH piece, they've made huge progress in terms of behavior. So that was something that she was really proud of, especially when you're drilling down into specific student groups and really seeing how teachers are, are really taking to heart a lot of the training, a lot of the PD, and a lot of the understanding around, like what she was talking about with microaggressions or micro assaults. And then finally, they do something unique at their school where the affinity groups are embedded into the school day. And so they have this time during the day where they may have, and it's not just, I think when sometimes we think about affinity groups, it's often a club type setting. And so this is structured time during the school day, which means there are lessons on identity. They have speakers come in, they will take field trips. So it is a really robust time for these groups, which she said has been really incredible, and they actually have a need for more FTE to kind of build out these groups, because there's such a huge need for them. And then finally, along with that, one of the things that came out of that was, on the form where you have to make reports if you experienced or witnessed a, a microaggression or, or an actual aggression or assault or micro assault, the students had a lot of opinions about what needed to be changed on that form. For example, one of them was, and they did a lot of workshops on this with students, but, and I'll close with this, which was, they said, you make us write out what happened, and now we're being re-traumatized by having to sit there and write out the whole thing that happened or the whole thing that I saw. And I, and we get why, but is there a way to do that where we don't have to do that? And so they did. And so they had lots of iterations of the new form, and it was changed based on that feedback. And so students are really happy that, number one, their voices were listened to. And it's a much safer and thoughtful form for when kiddos need to report something.
I got to sit with Principal Hedges from Durham, and I will say that she had a beautiful presentation on the TV with so many pics of engaged students and joyful teachers and classrooms. And of course, it was wonderful to look at those. And there is a real focus on community and culture in, in that school this year. And the four points that we really hit were literacy, attendance, PBIS, and equity. And so under each of those, we talked about the CKLA, the literacy adoption, and really wondering, you know, how that was going, what that looked like. And she mentioned that their favorite part of that is that, you know, it's really rich in themes, the read aloud part, and the connections across subjects, like, like music was really integrated, they were able to do that. They found that they are needing to supplement, because they don't feel it's as well-aligned with the science of reading as they thought it might be. So they are using a program called Ufly. They're the only school that's doing that right now. But, you know, it's the first year of that adoption. So everybody's sort of feeling that, those growing pains, you know, like any year, first year of adoption, you know, it's just a lot of gears trying to move. And the second year is, everybody's had that first year of exposure. So, so that's what they're feeling right now. And then to support MLE students, they're doing co-teaching, which was very exciting. They've done this for a long time, and K1, that's growing into grades three, four. And then we talked about me going to visit that, like she was very excited for me to just see that, because when I was like, hey, what does that look like in your classroom? She was just like, all right, you just have to come and see it. I can't even describe. So, so that'll be a plan at some point. When we talked about attendance, we talked about what that looks like in tier one, tier two, and tier three. And, you know, there were, she had descriptions of, you know, in tier one, they announce attendance weights for all grades, they post that by the entrance, there's incentives. In tier two, they send postcards from the staff. And then in tier three, they have some families that they really individually support. But most impressive is that she is working on getting her Type 10 certification so that she can personally pick up students and drive them to school when she can. And so like, so she was talking about like, I will wear a driver's hat and driver's gloves so that I can like go get them when she needs to. There are just a few students that would need to be supported in that way. For PBIS, she noted that right now, they only have 5% of students in tier two, which is much lower than expected. And, and that is because they have really worked to strengthen tier one supports. And they feel like they really hit that relationships, climate, and culture piece through school-wide systems, which, you know, she shared a ton of, so much community has been built. And, and just with that community, culture, climate really being a focus, you know, she noted that like all of that waxes and wanes and, but they have so few students in that, and then, and then very few students in tier three as well. But like, so few students in tier two that that, she really attributes to that. And then of course, this is not part of PBIS, but like really supporting staff with coffee carts and, you know, room service and snacks to staff, and just really trying to build that wrapper on community and making staff feel loved as well. In the equity part, they have their No Place for Hate group for students. They have a book exchange between families to build their communities and exchange traditions and their love of literacy. What does that look like at home? And then for students on IEPs that can't access field trips that their class may be taking, and to ensure equity of access to taking field trips, they arrange field trips for those students monthly, that may be different than trips that the rest of their class takes. They've taken trips to the Conestoga Swim Center, and they have, they took a trip to a farm, and of course, they have pictures of that, which was so wonderful, and they have more plans. And, and I guess the Conestoga Swim Center loved their group so much, they offered them a monthly trip with a like deeply discounted rate or something, and so they're going to try to go back. And then I always ask the principals, like, what are you most excited about? That's my last question I ask them. And she said that, that the monthly trips for those students was, was what she was most excited about, because they, they bring so much joy to so many students and to the teachers that support those students as well. But that's just a source of joy for the school. So it was wonderful to sit with her.
Director Weston, you want to go next?
Yeah, thank you so much. I had the pleasure of chatting with Principal Petrie over at Alberta Rider Elementary. We spoke about a co-teaching model for English language development, some significant progress on implementation of the new math and reading curriculum, and also adding more time to work on curriculum for teachers. And we also spoke about internal communication and communication with students themselves about their learning and progress. Also some courageous conversations about what our test scores are, what they mean. We spoke about kind of looking at the data different ways by student income, different backgrounds, to try and tease apart things that explain the test results and, and therefore keep understanding how to make improvements. We also talked about climate and culture, and a lot of great work happening around attendance and strengthening tier one improvements. And, and I did have some technical issues towards the end, but I really appreciated the time and, and insights. So thank you so much.
Superintendent, would you like to do your duty to fill in for?
Most, most definitely. Thank you very much.
He's going to owe you.
Yeah, he does. So I had the opportunity to sit in with Principal Cory Waffle out of Deer Creek. We had a small group, so it was a really good intimate conversation about how things are going at Deer Creek, what's working, some initiatives that they're working on, things to celebrate, some areas that they really want to continue to grow at and focus on as well. At the very beginning, when we focused on school, community, climate, and culture, she highlighted the importance of elevating our multilingual learners. And because the school's a TSI CSI school, it's a TSI school, meaning that it was identified as a targeted, targeted school for improvement through the state, which means they got a little bit of dollars, and the targeted area was for supporting our MLEs and our students receiving special services. And they used their TSI funding to, to really focus on writing supports. And they arrived at that through And they arrived at that through doing an analysis of their data, working in their PLCs and saying, this is an area where we can leverage, leverage outcomes and instructions because it's what our students need. And also she was really caused, really aware of not having as much supports in terms of an instructional coach. And so that's how they, they made the decision to focus on those areas. They're also focusing on their ESH process. And this is their second year of having their school be a no place for hate. And, but also in addition to doing that, finding areas to celebrate diversity and an inclusive community and being really intentional about that as well. They have something called a cultural climate committee that they also have that looks at data on students as a belonging and incidents of hate and bias as well. She mentioned that overall, problem behaviors have been lower than district averages. And that's probably attributed to some of the supports that their targeted supports that they have in creating, creating a sense of belonging for students and inclusion, but also proactive PBIS systems that they have as well. She said that the PBIS groups are running at higher frequency than they used to, and they try to make them fun. So they have things like the lunch bunch where they can focus on teaching PBIS strategies, but not making it seem so, so formalized. Again, they're trying to do a lot of work to, to celebrate diversity in schools. So they have heritage, heritage month, and also just inclusion activities that they're doing throughout the year. They're really working on getting families to get into schools. And by doing that, they can build bridges and make connections. And something that I failed to mention early on is that they're dealing with a significant shift in their student body demographic because they were one of the three schools that were impacted by the boundary change next, last year. So their student population has gone down significantly because so many kids have gone to Art Ruckin. But it's actually less of a homogenous school and more of a diverse school, student population. So that's something that they've, that they have noticed in their school population as well. Okay, shifting to academic outcomes. They had some pretty good success with their TSI dollars so much that they don't get the money next year because they got out of the TSI distinction, which is kind of a double edged sword. Because one of the reasons that they were potentially able to, to elevate student outcomes is because of those resources. But with those no longer being available as a district, we need to work with our instructional team to make sure that we can supplement those resources. I'm going to kind of speed up here a little bit and just hit some of my connections and curiosities and clarifications. One thing that they really focus on in Deer Creek is they have a variety of, of activities that are focused on improving attendance. They have an attendance mentor team that looks at strategies, data and implementation of promoting positive attendance. But they also, if you go into Deer Creek, and I try to get in there several times a year, every student is greeted by name when you walk by them. There'll never be a time when a student walks by and there's not an engagement with an adult. So students are welcome. The principal sits out front and greets kids and says goodbye to kids every day. And it's a, it's a very inclusive school. So to that end, they're one of the schools, and I failed to mention this during my report. They're one of the schools that their attendance or the district attendance is 66%. For regular attenders, it's 1% under the state average. Deer Creek is at about 75%. So they're doing really good work around attendance. And that was my point of connection is they're doing all this work around inclusion. And as a result, they're seeing kids come to school. And then when you see kids come to school, you see, you see the outcomes in academic areas. And so they're doing a really good work out there. And so that was it for Deer Creek.
Thank you. And I sat with Rory Moore from Templeton Elementary. He was quick to remind me that Templeton was the only elementary school that hit the five and eight percent goals last year in both five and eight. And so he's really working on building on that momentum. Their attendance has also been really good. They were up 8% over last year. That makes them a 17% increase over the last three years. So really doing some great work there. Their I-ready growth is also very strong, 118 to 133% growth over the year for their students. Lots of really good things going on. He's really focused in on high leverage instructional moves. He's got some things he calls his tights with the staff, of things that they're all going to do. And communication is one. One that I found really interesting was they have goal folders for every single student. And every quarter, the teacher will sit down with a student and say, okay, so here's your goal for this quarter. And that way the student is able to sort of take ownership of their education. And it's having a really positive impact on students knowing what they need to do and being incentivized to do it. And, and that self-discovery of, oh, I can be in charge of my own education, right? I can make things happen for myself, really powerful. They're seeing that make a difference for kids. They, a lot of stuff to cover. I don't want to go into everything. But the other thing I found really interesting was in the professional development realm. Rory puts together a schedule of professional development for the year and is very transparent with his teachers. Here's what we're going to do on this day. Teachers have the opportunity to push back a little bit and say, well, hang on, what if we did it this way? There's a, a team that goes over it to make sure that the professional development really is what the teachers need at the time they need it. And so that means when the PD happens, the teachers are invested in it. And the, so for example, something like the teacher evaluation tool that is a district wide tool. At Templeton, they've taken it and they've made it very specific to Templeton, not changing the goals. But what does this particular, a four in this category, what does that look like at Templeton? And so the principal can say, when I come into your room to do an evaluation, I'm looking for these things. So for you to be getting a four as a teacher, these are the things I'm going to see. So the teachers know exactly what is expected of them and they have buy-in about it. And that means that the staff is really on board, knows what to do. And in a teacher who maybe doesn't is able to say, well, hang on a second, I need help with that. And there's a very strong sense of camaraderie. Nobody's being singled out for, you didn't do that, right? It's more a matter of how can we all work together? How can we learn from each other? What are our best practices? And like Director Miles, at the end, I always want to know what's, what are you most proud of? And he's, he, Principal Moore said that they have a great school with teachers who own their work and are true professionals. And I thought that was just a really wonderful thing to be able to say about your staff, to have that faith in them. So that is the SIP report for Templeton. Once again, it is a fire hose of information. It's really hard to pick out the, the few things. And I really appreciate hearing from all the different schools through the eyes of our board members. All right, our second report and discussion item is our student basic needs update, and that is Dr. Unagan. Welcome back.
Good evening, everyone. I have Colleen here with us again to talk a little bit more about our equity infrastructure related to basic needs. Our department is focused on serving the whole child. And one of the most important components is basic needs. So Colleen will share a little bit more about that. And then Thor, do we have the presentation up for that? It's connected to the, it's the same slide deck as Good News and Recognition.
Yeah, sweet. Thank you. Yeah, so I, I shared a little bit about what our FPAs are doing broadly, but I have some more specific data here for you in the basic needs report. Next slide. So this is the Family Resource Center. It's right behind this building. And this is really the hub of the basic needs infrastructure in TTSD. And we do serve families who come to the Resource Center in person. It is, it's more rare now, I think, than it was when it first began. Because most of our services are provided after an FPA has connected with the family. And we really hope that the families make a connection at their school because that is close, especially for Tuolatin families, like because that is where they're going to be at. And it's more accessible for them. Next slide. There's a lot going on here, but I just wanted to share our report from last year. And just to give kind of a comparison before I share some data from this first quarter. As you can see, like our top spending was for utilities assistance for families. We spent over $11,000 of our funds for that. And we are seeing very similar trends now for families. And then the pictures are just showing the resource fairs that we put on. And then Elena Elwin and Jenny Bustos, those were my family partnership advocates there at the, at the Family Resource Center. Jenny is now at Tuolatin Elementary and Elena has moved on. So I miss them so much, but they did so much work last year. Next slide. So our funding comes primarily from grants. So we received the social services grant from the city of Tigard. This is $10,000 is the most we've ever received. So we're so grateful for the city of Tigard for granting us that this year. And we also received $4,000 to support our families in Tuolatin from the outside agencies grant. Super grateful to be receiving that year after year from the city of Tuolatin. And then we also get, I don't, I didn't, wasn't able to pull numbers from this year, but last year we received $2,500 in monetary donations from the community. This is often just people who knock on our door and they're like, here, I want this to go to Food for Families and hand us a check. And so I'm so grateful for our amazing TTSD community. Next slide. So I know attendance is a huge focus right now as well. And so I just wanted to make the connection before I went into all of the data about, I found this report on the top reasons why children miss school in Oregon. It is, I just looked at it again. It's a little bit old now, but I, I need to find a more recent report. But I believe that this is still accurate. That chronic health issues, food, clothing, environmental factors, like students having lice or no clean clothes or transportation, these are really important factors for children missing school. And so according to Maslow's, as we, someone shared earlier, if students don't have their basic needs met, they're not going to be able to learn and perform in school. And so that's why the work that we're doing is so important here. Next slide. So I'm going by school quarter and not like the school quarter. So for the first quarter, from August 11th to November 7th. And August 11th is when our FPAs come back from the summer. These, well, I guess I'll start with, this data is provided by our FPAs through, they each have a data tracking form. And I believe these numbers are incredibly low and are not a complete picture of how many families are actually served. Because rather than tracking what they're doing, they're actually doing the work. And so, but even so, seeing the high numbers I highlighted, the clothing resources and hygiene. This is numbers that FPAs, FPAs report that they made contact with a family about, or a family contacted them. And so our highest needs that families are having conversations about are clothing, food and rent and utility assistance. And unfortunately, a lot of resources in the community for rent and utility assistance are gone now. They were, a lot of programs were federally funded and they completely lost funding. And so this is really a big strain that we're seeing for our families. And next slide. And so to address these needs, this is a small picture of what we use our grant funds for. And so one of those is space age gift cards. So if families share with an FPA like, hey, I can't get my kid to school because I don't have gas, we can provide them a space age gift card. And then we provide grocery gift cards. Many of those come from donations from our gift card drives that happen. But we do have, we have had to supplement in the past year because we've run out. The need is a lot higher than when I started in 2023. And then laundry gift cards, making sure kids have clean clothes. And this year so far, we've already spent $6,000 in utility assistance. This is a huge, huge need for our families. And we, we do only contribute $250 maximum for families. But if we could pay their full utility bill, I wish we could. But this is only a fraction of the amount that they owe sometimes. And then for furniture assistance, families who are moving into their first apartment from a shelter or they're fleeing domestic violence, we can provide them a trip to Community Warehouse where families go with an FPA. And for $150, they can pick out as much furniture as they want. So there's mattresses, couches, dressers, like a bunch of kitchen utensils. And so this is a huge resource for our families. And if you ever have any extra furniture, you should donate to Community Warehouse because they are really amazing. Next slide. And then for family engagement, this is the like less fun and joyous family engagement. But one of the biggest, one of the biggest things that family, or that FPAs are reaching out to families about are school supplies. And we're so grateful for all of the organizations who donate at the beginning of the year to our students. And FPAs do a lot of that facilitation of getting the school supplies to the families. But other high, high numbers are academic support. So that's attending 20% meetings, attending meetings with families, and then connection between other school staff and home. So a lot of times the FPAs are the trusted individual at the school. And so they are able to make that connection between teacher and parent or administrator and parent and be that trusted individual there. Next slide. And then we, at the Family Resource Center and throughout the district, we support all children in zero to 18 in the TTSD boundary. And so we serve our early learning community, ages zero to four. And I think this is an extremely low number for our early learning families. However, the most solid number is our referrals to Northwest Children's Outreach. That is a, an organization that's within Rolling Hills Church. And they provide baby clothes, or more than baby clothes. They provide clothes, diapers, wipes, toys, hygiene kits, so many things for organize, like other organizations in the community. And so this year we've had 173 referrals for families to Northwest Children's Outreach. And we specifically use this service for baby, zero to four items, baby clothes. And this is a huge endeavor. It takes, it's, it's a very simple process, but it takes a lot of time to input all of the information from the family, like sizes of things, what size diapers do you need? What else do you need? And then we have to go pick up all of the bags from Northwest Children's Outreach every Wednesday. And I'm so grateful for our volunteer Lynette Elwin for supporting this. She goes for us almost every single Wednesday. And then she also checks all of the bags to make sure that everything that the family requested is in there. And then supplements from our supply. I did this a couple of times at the beginning of the year when she wasn't available and it is so much work. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm. Um, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm really proud of the support that we provide for our, um, younger kids in the district. Uh, next slide. Um, and then last, we have our caring closet, uh, that is maintained by Kim Thorin, who is our caring closet coordinator. She's so amazing, um, and I really wanted to highlight our top two schools that have, uh, that she, of clients that she's seen this year, so Templeton has, she's seen eighty-three students from Templeton and eighty-six students from Tigard High. Um, but other schools have really high numbers as well, and so this is also a really good indicator of what needs are popping up in our community. Um, and this is eight hundred and seventy students total that have been served by the caring closet. Um, and that also translates to four, four hundred and fifty-six appointments. So every single student and family has the opportunity to come to the caring closet, and they basically shop. So they have a list, you can get four shirts, two pairs of jeans, a jacket, all of these other things, and the students get to go and pick out what they want from the caring closet. Um, it's a really, really cool place, so, but four hundred and fifty-six appointments in the first quarter, or first quarter is crazy. Um, but yeah, Kim does such a great job of organizing, and, um, it's also supported by a lot of really amazing volunteers. Um, and, uh, oh yeah, one more slide. Um, yeah, and I just wanted to bring it back, uh, to the strategic plan, um, and specifically focusing on our priority populations, um, and then even more specifically, our multilingual learners of English, um, and uh, of all of the stats that I just shared, fifty-one percent of those students are multilingual learners, um, and so these, uh, services that we provide are critical for, um, their success. And thank you.
Thank you, and we welcome questions, comments.
And I just want to squeeze in there, a, a major point of gratitude for Colleen and her work in managing and supporting and facilitating a lot of this. Um, we talked about visions of our FPAs and then also the vision of Colleen's role. Um, we had imagined what that would look like, but her skill set, her, um, passion and her just organizational skills, as you can see here, and i- is a, a major benefit, um, that I think our students, families, and staff are benefiting from. So, thank you, Colleen.
So, thank you very much, and it's always a little eye-opening to see the numbers, just how many kids, how many families, I mean, you think about eight hundred and seventy students, that's eight or nine percent of our student population has been served by the caring closet. That's, that's significant. I, I would hope that everybody who's watching this, um, says, hmm, I wonder if I have any furniture lying around my house that I don't need. Hmm, I wonder if I've got any clothes that my kids have outgrown that are still in decent shape, or a pair of jeans that I bought that my son refused to wear, and so they're perfectly new and could donate them, because clearly the need is very, very high. Um, and I'm very grateful for you for fulfilling that need.
Anybody else want to say anything specific?
Yeah, I would just echo all of that, and really I know it takes a huge team, um, to, at school sites, at the Resource Center, your dedication and work, um, to make all of this possible for our families, and I, I think you're right, this is, these numbers are all, we know they're low. Um, and so we know there's a huge need, and we keep seeing, and what I think is, again, it's not like it's a good problem, but I think it's incredible that we're solving the problem, which is we're finding new needs and then figuring out ways to solve them for our families, um, or partner with them on possible solutions. Um, and so it's not sort of like, this is what the Resource Center does, like I remember working with Catherine West years ago, and it was, you know, half of these resources were the things that either we thought families needed or that were accessible, and so to see whether it's community partnerships, like we heard earlier, or donations, or NCO, or all these other things really partnering, um, is really incredible, and just to continue to say, okay, like, now we know that this is a need, how are we gonna partner with our communities to, to fill it and support the students or support the family? Um, so I think, I think that's really incredible, and thank you for all your work.
I'm just sorry that I missed a lot of your presentation, but we get to talk often, and you know that we're really grateful for your services.
Can I just clarify one thing? I know that we've talked about the, when we talk about the numbers being low, it's not that, it's not a needed, it's just like, it's under-reported because of the workload. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yes, okay, and that's what I was meaning, which is we know there's a lot more people being
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our reports and discussion section of the agenda. We'll now move into our action items, and we'll start with our second read of policy BHD. Director Ree, come on down.
All right, good evening, everyone, board members, superintendent, and student representatives. Uh, this evening, we are taking a look at Board Policy BHD once again. Um, as a second reads, we wanted the opportunity to talk about it, um, and so I have it here this evening, presented in the format in which, uh, we had put out for feedback to, um, our, our, um, our attorney around like what we should do. So here's the recommended language that has been added to this or selected amongst the two. So if you look at the second sentence, the amount of the stipend is limited to the amount included in the budget. So that is what the recommendation, um, of the team, um, was to go forward with. In addition, if you go down to the second paragraph, it says that, um, a last sentence we needed to add back that was part of the original policy that got missed, that had to do with reimbursements. So that last sentence in the second paragraph, reimbursements include but not limited to transportation, meals, lodging, and miscellaneous expenses, was an add-back. So those are the two changes that are being brought forth in this policy. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Board Chair, um, to lead the discussion around what next steps will be.
Thank you, yeah, I feel a little like I'm behind the wheel on this one, um, since I missed the meeting where we had the first read of it. But I'm sort of feeling like we haven't, I haven't heard a rich conversation from the board about whether or not the board wants to add stipends. Um, I, I heard like, maybe a board in the future might want to, and so we should have the language in place. But I was wondering if, with all of the concerns I heard about adding it to the budget, and then do we have a vote where we have to, uh, identify a potential conflict of interest or an actual conflict? If we don't need, if we don't want to do stipends for ourselves or in the foreseeable future, then maybe we don't need to adopt new language at all. We have a policy that is perfectly legal by OSBA standards right now, if we don't want to do this type of thing, but I'm also um, open to the idea that maybe we want to set this up so that a future board could do it. So I just wanted to make sure we'd had an opportunity to have that conversation in public before we do any changes to this document, since it is a board voting to potentially pay itself in the future. Director Weston, I see your hand up.
Thank you so much, um, yeah, I wanted to weigh in on that, I think the budget is tight right now, but that at some point this board and other boards throughout Oregon should have stipends because it's an important role, and I think it makes it more accessible, um, to a more diverse that of, of representation, if it is a paid position. Um, my, and I, I've, I appreciate you bringing up the, um, the idea that we haven't had a robust discussion, because I was starting to wonder if there'd been some kind of quorum violation, um, since we hadn't spoken about it, um, so thanks for bringing it up, um, and I think that one thing that we could consider would be to have an independent commission, which would avoid a conflict of interest altogether. I said we could potentially look at having an independent commission, sorry, I, might be some sound issue.
But what was that about the quorum violation?
Yeah, sorry, we had a distraction in the boardroom, and we couldn't hear when you said, I think you said quorum violation, but it was unclear in the boardroom, Director Weston.
Okay, um, so I said that if we had an independent commission, it could avoid a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
So Chairs, there's me, just to address your point, um, so we don't currently have a policy that would, that is legal enough to address stipends at all, we've got, okay. So, and just, and we did talk about this last time, but just for our clarification and for the public's clarification also, this policy does not bind us in any way or obligate us to take stipends, in fact, just by virtue of having the policy, we are not taking stipends. It allows this board or any future board to take stipends, but does not initiate stipends. So, and the purpose of the, the idea, the purpose of the stipends, um, which did not come from us, right, this is, this is a law that passed. The, the purpose behind that, the idea behind that was that, um, was that it would actually be more accessible um, to run for the board for folks that maybe needed to pay for babysitting or, or other expenses that were associated with being on a board. And so, not, not to say that it would preclude anybody from taking the stipend that wanted to, but the point of it initially was to make it more accessible to serve on a board. Um, so that was the original thought behind it. Um, and so just to put it out there, because I don't think that was part of our discussion last time, but, but just by virtue of having the policy, we don't start it. And, and so, but if we had the policy, then any future board could also then have it. And the discussion that we had last time was, do we do it by resolution, or do we do it by the budget? And then this, so this one is by doing it, we had a conversation about that last time. This version that has been looked at by legal counsel suggests that we do it through the budget process, which then goes through a hole, we have to declare a conflict of interest, but then we can talk about it and vote on it. So then we have language in place for any future board to then just do it. As far as, I mean, this is the way that it would be done, there would be no other, to Director Weston's point, there would be no other way to do it, there's no other, there wouldn't be a way to have a commission or any other way to do it, this would be the way to do it. This is the mechanism by which a board could take a stipend. So this would be the only way to do that.
So then am I correct in my assumption that if we decided we did not want to take a stipend, then we would simply have a budget that had that item at zero, and then every board member could vote for that budget, because there's clearly no conflict of interest, potential or real. And then if there was at some point in the future, a board that wanted to have stipends, they would include a dollar amount that would cover the board members who had indicated an interest in having a stipend, is that?
I believe so, yes, now, again, not attorney can't give legal advice, I say that seven times a day. But I believe so, right, if there's nothing that is given to the board, right, if there's nothing the board members are taking, then that's not a conflict in that year. Again, maybe our attorney would need to weigh in on that, or maybe they did, but I can't imagine that that would be a conflict if we're not paying ourselves in that year.
Okay.
Not legal advice, not legal advice.
That is also my understanding as well.
Director Weston.
Also not legal advice, but I'm wondering if voting on a budget that didn't include a stipend, because it would still have the potential of a stipend, like if you vote to not give yourself money, I think that's still something.
A conflict of interest has to include a, uh, a, a monetary gain because of your position or, or avoidance of a detriment. So if the, if the budget item were zero, there would, by definition, be no gain. Is that what you were gonna say, sorry?
Well, I was gonna say, you, until you decide that you want to do a stipend, that is the only time you're gonna have to vote. If you decide that next year there isn't gonna be a stipend, then it's just not gonna be a part of the budget, it just doesn't get voted on. You don't need to add a zero amount, it's whenever it's decided that members of the board want to take a stipend, then you would include it in the budget, and then it'll be voted when you have to vote into the budget, the, the entire budget, so that is the only time you'll need to be concerned with that.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that, uh, when we asked Director Lynn to hash it out with the attorney, you know, we, were sure that she would come back to us with a policy that wouldn't, um, throw a wrench into anything that we're doing. Uh, for that, I would like to move and, uh, move that the board approve the additional, the addition of Board Policy BHD as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Director Hyman, seconded by Director Miles, that we approve the addition of Board Policy BHD as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, and, uh, thank you very much for the additional legwork on us, uh, answering all of those more technical questions, I appreciate the, the legwork there. Okay, our next action item is our Arco Urus Appeal. Uh, Dr. Lisa McCall and company. Welcome.
Can you do it on the bud, you do it for the budget?
Ready?
Um, one second, uh, I think that's, that this is important, so we might need to make an amendment to the last mo, to the last action item.
Let's just take a brief two-minute recess.
So, one thing that we failed to address is that, um, this is where we were last meeting, is that by taking action because of the implications involved in it, in taking action right now, you should have declared a potential conflict of interest. A theoretical conflict of interest is what should have happened if, just in terms of like OGEK uh, in ethics, and so, um, I think what we need to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, is take action, potentially take action again.
What's Robert's rules on this? I'm sorry, I forgot that part.
Track Robert's rules.
Yeah. So that's what OSBA says, is that
Okay.
On the, when you vote on the policy, you declare, we all declare a potential conflict of interest to adopt the policy, we talked about that last time. But I forgot, to remind us this time, I apologize. So we need to either rescind that action and do it again?
Okay, I've never had to
You'd have to vote to rescind the action, yeah.
Okay, then I think we need a motion to rescind the vote.
Does that sound right to you all? This is, like, I've seen it done a couple of times.
Very much. Director Weston?
I'll make a motion to rescind the motion to approve.
Give us one more minute, Director Weston, we are all in uncharted territory here, so we're Googling.
All going the exact same thing. Yeah, I think he could rescind, I think he just rescind it. He just rescind it, so you already have one, you already have one motion to rescind.
Okay, so I have a motion to rescind, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Director Weston, seconded by Director Hyman, is that we rescind our previous vote. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Now we do a roll call vote, and then we all declare.
Okay, so now, I should have done, I thought I needed to do a roll call vote anyway. Uh, see, this is what happens when you don't do a board meeting for a couple of weeks. See, this is what happens when you don't do a board meeting for a couple of weeks. You forget everything. All right.
So now should I make the motion again?
So yes, now I need a motion.
So now I move that the board approved the addition of board policy BHD as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Hymas, seconded by Director Miles, that we approve the addition of board policy BHD as presented. I will be taking a roll call vote this time. We'll start left to right. Director Hymas.
I would like to declare that I have a potential, what was that? Potential conflict of interest, but I vote yes.
All right. Vice Chair.
I'm declaring a potential conflict of interest and I vote yes.
Director Miles.
I declare a potential conflict of interest and vote yes.
Director Weston.
I declare a potential conflict, conflict of interest and I vote yes.
And I also declare a potential conflict of interest and I vote yes. So we have a unanimous yes vote and a unanimous potential conflict of interest. That's one of the stranger votes we've ever done. All right, the, the motion passes unanimously. Now we can move on to our next action item. I do apologize for the delay. It's important to get these things right.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Okay. Good evening, board members, superintendent and student rep. Tonight, the board will vote on the resubmitted charter school application appeal from Arco Iris Spanish immersion school. And that is following the criteria on the Oregon revised statutes, which 338 section 055, which is the evaluation process and criteria for appeals. And so to support the review and evaluation, Arco staff will give a brief presentation highlighting key revisions and updates to their application. Following, but board members will have time to ask questions. So at this time, I'd like to invite our Arco staff, starting with our director, Jesus Ors, or do you?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you so much and good evening, everyone. Dear Tygar Toetan School District Board of Directors, we're here to appeal the denial of our charter application and to kindly request full reconsideration based on the facts that we bring forward today. Let's start with slide number four, please. Thank you so much. So we asked the board to look at what state law mentions and to evaluate our proposal under those requirements. So Oregon state law 338.055 is clear. When evaluating a charter application, boards can only consider the criteria that state law specifically lists, nothing extra, and in good faith. And I'm going to use that statement in good faith in a couple of my slides. Next slide, please. So for me personally, I'd like to start by defining what good faith means for me. For me, good faith means engaging in a way that is fair, that is transparent, that is grounded in a partnership, that puts students first. I heard tonight TTSD leadership mention statements such as relationships first, humanity first, people first. Next slide, please. Our intent tonight with our appeal, it's exactly the same. Humanity first, people first, students first. And it's grounded in that good faith that is also mentioned in state law. We have strengthened our proposal and we continue to demonstrate our willingness to collaborate as it is tonight. Next slide, please. So in good faith, we listened to every point in the board's findings. We responded constructively. We enhanced and clarified our one-way immersion, our community support, and financials to address all of your questions. Next slide, please. So in good faith tonight, let's start by clarifying each of these one by one. And I'm going to start with our one-way immersion program. This was seen by the board as duplicative and as competition. Arco Iris is not the same as TTSD's two-way immersion program. Our program is one-way immersion and it's 80/20%. So it's completely different by design. We are different than TTSD's 90/10, which starts that way in the lower grades, and it moves out to 50/50 in the upper grades. Our program also includes a cultural experience for students. State law is clear. ORS 338.055 does not allow competition as a factor in charter approval decisions. Next slide, please. In good faith, we also clarified our financial plan. Our model is built on Oregon State per Student Funding, also known as ADMW, not only grants. And that includes, I'm sorry, and our financial plan also include our revised forecast, contingency plan, and reserve policy. More importantly than all of that, more importantly than projections, forecasts, our 16-year record of strong enrollment, strong partnerships, and finances clearly and realistically reinforces our capacity to open a second school. We fully meet the financial requirements in ORS 338.055. A note here on facilities, next slide, please. A note here on facilities. In good faith, I want to briefly clarify, that was an additional question that we received, how our facility financing works. Charter schools use tax-exempt bonds to purchase and renovate buildings. Those bonds are secured only by the school, not the district, not the state. There's no financial risk to TTSD. The bond, the bond covers 100% of building associated costs. And investors choose schools like Arco Iris because of our strong track record, those 16 years of experience that I just mentioned before. Next slide, please. Community support. So lastly, and in good faith, we have provided documentation of community support. As mentioned previously, when we came and presented, we had 160 supporters that provided signatures. We have 47 more families that we, that we supplied, expressing interest without a location, without a specific location. That's super important, that's very, very strong. We had additional speakers tonight. We had a speaker the first time that we presented. And we had personal letters sent to the board with very few time to produce this. We received notification two weeks ago, that was Thanksgiving break, and we had one more week. Right, so with, with that very, very limited timeline, we were able to provide these things without a facility in place. So there's strong advocacy from the community. But I'm going to go back to state law. State law is clear. Community support is not quantifiable. There's no quantity there. And more importantly, not limited to the residents of the district. Charter schools by state law are open to all Oregon families and support must be considered statewide. Those are the three things, and those, that is what state law mentions as well. Next slide, please. In closing, we have acted in good faith throughout this process, from our initial application to this strength and appeal. Now we respectfully, we kindly ask the board to review our proposal in that same good spirit that is in the law. We believe that this is an opportunity for partnership and for expanding high-quality Spanish immersion learning opportunities for TTSD families and all families in Oregon. Next slide, please. I leave you with this, next steps. Thank you so much for your time.
Your opportunity for questions.
Do board members have any questions?
Yeah. I just want to say, and I've said this before, I will not be participating in discussion or in any vote because I need to recuse myself. I've worked at this charter school in Beaverton for many years, so I think it's appropriate to recuse myself.
Thank you, I appreciate your transparency. Do other board members have any questions?
I just, do you have a question? Because I have some comments. Okay, cool. Thank you. So thank you for being here and thank you again for your presentation and for your interest in, in standing up a charter school here and in our school district boundaries. I'm really happy that you mentioned full faith because one thing that's been important to us, or good faith rather, one thing that's been important to us throughout this process is are we in good faith executing all the things that we're required to execute? And we've, I believe we've done that. We've done, fulfilled a good faith evaluation that's copied in your board packet that itemizes all the areas that were required to assess when it comes to, when it comes to evaluating and making a recommendation on the viability of a charter school within district boundaries. So we've done that. There's three areas that we did address that, that raised concerns. And one of them was around the financial plan. We've seen no substantial changes in revisions to this financial plan from the previous application. We, while there was a, a number of comments for support under our review, we saw that the majority of the names that are, that commented in the position, in the petition were those that already had affiliations with Arco Iris through, and many that were not in TTSD boundaries. And so that was something that we took into consideration. Another thing that we took into consideration was, are there current TTSD families that were requesting for a charter school for a one-way immersion program? And we did not see a substantial amount. I think it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, you would know this because we talked about it, I think it was less than five.
Yeah.
Or so. And so we take that along with the fact that we do provide a two-way immersion program. And the difference between a one-way and a two-way, that the primary difference is, the one-way is a mostly native English-speaking program and there's a demand and a place for that. And then a two-way is a mix of native, native and heritage speakers and with a broader range of having, having access or having previous access to that, to the language, right? So we're really proud of having a mixed two-way program. I think it allows us to bring a broad cross set of cultures together in one space to, to co-learn languages and become bilingual together. And that's something that we're incredibly proud of in TTSD. So I do want to say that we do offer a robust and accessible dual-language program of study. Earlier, it was mentioned that not all families have accessibility. And I'm going to concede that there might be issues with awareness that we need to work on because we want to make sure that every student or every family knows that there's these programs available. When I checked during the last presentation from, from Arco Iris, I asked both of our principals from our elementary programs and they said that the waitlist was somewhere around five families in the summertime, with most of those families getting access to the program after a short period of time during the summer, some choosing to opt out. So that waitlist is somewhere between one and two and sometimes zero, depending on which school it was. So it is accessible, though it's not 100% accessible. There has been, on most years, there's a family or two that get left out. We just want to own that as well. This is good faith, full transparency on accessibility for our programs. So those are the three areas that we saw in our good faith evaluation of this program. And this isn't an indictment on the program. It's just an assessment on if it fits the criteria for us. And so with that being said, our position as district leadership has not changed on our recommendation for, under our review of Arco Iris and our recommendation at this moment would be that we, we don't recommend that an approval of Arco Iris, but the, this is a board choice to, to accept or not accept the recommendation. You all have, we put all the information out there that Arco Iris, Iris shared with us. And then we also want to share that we went above and beyond by providing them a platform to share their case. And we really appreciate it, being able to go back and forth and, and asking questions. And every time we asked you all a question, you all were able to respond. So we, we appreciate that in this process as well.
Are there any questions or comments?
I'm trying to think of how to address the presentation. I found it rather off-putting that, and condescending actually, that how it was delivered. Because I don't think any of us here tried to do anything that was not in good faith of looking at the requirements. One of the things that we said was that we were denying it due to the financial implications that was explained to us by district leadership. Also, knowing what I know about dual language and about two-way immersion programs are vastly more, vastly, yeah, more beneficial to students who have an L1 already and you're layering on top their L2. And they're far, far better than a one-way immersion program. So I don't think that will even be a competition if we're looking at it academically. So I, I guess I, I guess I would, I, I don't know what, I don't know what, if I have a question or not, but rather just more, more of a comment than anything.
I would like to just echo a few of the things that my colleague said. I find the idea of, of talking about good faith. When you say that 47 more families signed up, but when we looked at those names, it was not 47 families. It was about 40 families. There were a lot of duplications where both parents assigned it independently. So when we talk about being transparent and in full good faith, it's a little hard to take a lecture from you when I can see you've done the exact same thing to, that you're accusing us of not doing, you've done yourself. So that bothers me. The other thing that I'm confused by is in your initial report, you said you wanted to rent a building. And then in your financial explanation for how you fixed that, you talk about bonding to buy a building. You can't bond to rent a building. So could you please explain how does bonding solve your rental problem?
Good evening. My name is David Robertson. I'm the financial advisor to the school. I'm a financial advisor working with charter schools throughout the Western United States. I've completed over 60 transactions and seen a variety of different finance plans. The majority of schools out there, they, there's two major ways that schools, besides getting an angel investor, the two major ways that schools nowadays, charter schools are building their buildings, they will do a developer lease, where a developer will come in, build the building, renovate a building, then lease it back to the school. That hasn't been actively done much in Oregon. There are a few, but that is done throughout, throughout the nation on how to finance schools. Other ways is that charter schools can then issue tax-exempt bonds and to buy a building. So if there was a misunderstanding, we apologize, but the school has a wherewithal to issue bonds to buy the building. Most likely here in Oregon, buying and building, a new building has been prohibitive just because of the land and construction costs. And so they'd most likely buy an existing building, renovate that building. We've gone through the financial analysis. I've compared this to what other schools out there are doing. So from, I don't know what, I'm not trying to throw arrows. I'm just trying to understand, when you say it's not viable. We've been through the financials. We've compared this with what other charter schools and other areas are doing. And they're very consistent. So from a financial perspective, we do think this is viable from what our experience has been and kind of seeing how we've gone through the process of looking at what the likely revenues are coming in based upon some realistic enrollment projections, what those revenues would be from both a local source, the state, the state funding is obviously the lion's share, being 90-plus percent of that revenue. And then there are some grants and federal monies that come in. And then the lion's share of the expenses do lie in, like teachers and benefits and then the, the facilities cost. But looking at all of those, this is a viable option for the school to proceed forward. We've gone to the point, we've even actually, the existing Arco investor who is, owns the, the bonds on the original building, we've reached out to them saying, hey, in theory, if the school would move forward, would you have interest in this? And they said, yes, we love the leadership, we love the management. They've done a fantastic job on running their. fantastic job on running their finances, and so we do believe that there is a strong market to buy these bonds. So if there was a misunderstanding, we apologize, but yes, the school would plan to purchase a building, renovate it, and issue these bonds to finance that facility. And in our experience, the financials are there to support the financing.
Thank you. Director Weston, you have a question?
Thank you, yes. I have a question about how such a school, and I apologize if this is within the packet as well, but I have a question about how that would work in the school if you have older elementary or middle school students who also have the, who don't already have Spanish language in their existing education. How would it start, is there, how would that taper kind of over time, or is it not necessary to have existing Spanish-language skills?
Point of clarification, Director Weston, are you asking Arco Edis the approach for a one-way immersion program? Or is that directed towards TTSD?
I'm asking Arco Edis about, you know, if they have, for example, they're opening a fifth grade, say, in the initial school, would you bring in students that don't already speak Spanish, or kind of how that would work?
Thank you.
The program is normally a gradual program. We understand that the ideal situation would be to enroll students in the lower grades, which is the case, how we started the school in the first place. So that would be the way that we would plan it for, right? We have to understand that there might be certain changes, but ideally, you build a program with kinder first, kinder for second, it's how I described it. Our program is 80 to 20%, which means it's a different program than the ones that are offered in Tiger-Tualatin School District. It stays the same all the way throughout fifth grade. There might be some nuances or some changes, maybe going to a 70/30, depending on the math program that we use. At the moment, we use a math program, there are many that are there that are translated into Spanish, so there needs a little bit of English included when we are teaching math. But it stays pretty consistent, 80/20, 70/30 all the way to fifth grade. Once it goes into a middle school, the majority of one-way immersion programs go into a 50/50, and that's the model that we would follow as well.
Thank you.
I think, unless there's any further questions, is motion?
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. The board is asked to review the resubmitted proposal and deliberating, oh wait, yeah, using the sanctuary statutory criteria outlined in ORS 338.0553 and TTSD Policy LBE-AR. Following deliberation, the board should take action to deny the resubmitted charter school proposal.
It's been moved by Director Jaimez and seconded by Vice Chair Rubin, that the board has reviewed this resubmitted proposal and deliberated using the statutory criteria outlined in ORS 338.0553 and TTSD Policy LBE-AR, and that following deliberation, the board motions to deny the resubmitted charter school proposal. Is there any further questions, comments? Hearing none, I think perhaps we should do this by a roll call vote. Director Jaimez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rubin.
Aye.
Director Weston.
No.
Director Miles.
Abstained.
And I, Chair Zershmid Amayey. By my calculations, that means the vote is three yeses, one no, and one abstention. The motion carries. Thank you all very much. It is nine o'clock, I want to just check in with the rest of the board. Do we need to take a five-minute recess, or are people okay with continuing on? Okay, we will continue on, and hopefully we can finish up in 25 minutes, otherwise I will be coming back to ask for a vote to extend the meeting. So we will now move on to our next action item, which is our board approval of the 2025 Bond Project Managers' Contract, and that is, Director Montag. Good evening.
Good evening. So tonight, I'm bringing to you the third of three project manager contracts for approval. As I went over last board meeting, we went through a project management RFP to get proposals for project management. We had seven folks that did that scoring, one previous TTSD employee, one 2016 Bond Oversight Committee member that did scoring, four individuals that are currently with TTSD, and, excuse me, one architect from the architectural firm that did that scoring. And at that time, we came to three project managers, companies to do that. Cornerstone Management Company was awarded two of the projects, or actually, three of the projects. Wenahaw Company was awarded one of the projects, those are the two that the board approved last time, last board meeting. And the third one was awarded to HMK for FFNE. So that's the contract that we're asking for approval for tonight, and that amount is an amount not to exceed $864,697. It spans a period of 54 months, where the other two proposals will only span a period of 36 months, because FFNE covers all, goes throughout all of the projects throughout the course of the bond. So that's the request for the project management contract tonight.
Are there any questions?
No questions. I'd like to recommend or move to award a contract to HMK Company for Construction Management Services for 2025 Bond Capital Projects in the amount of $864,697.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Jaimez, seconded by Director Miles, that we award a contract to HMK Company for Construction Management Services for 2025 Bond Capital Projects in the amount of $864,697. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Now move to our next action item, which is a resolution granting exemption from competitive bidding. We have three of these in a row, so I have a feeling it's the same song three times, three varieties?
Yes.
With a refrain in between, are you going to do some tap dancing too?
So tonight, we're bringing three resolutions for exemption from competitive bidding under ORS 279-C335. It allows districts to do exemptions from competitive bidding, the typical competitive bidding process, by allowing a qualification plus bid, as opposed to just a straight bid price. This is allowed if the district can demonstrate that it does not interfere with competitive bidding, or, and that it will give a substantial, potentially give a substantial cost savings to the district. So the findings of fact on all three of these resolution requests have found that that in fact is the case. We use this competitive, or this qualification plus bid price multiple times through the 2016 bond with great success, and it gives us good cost savings, because the contractors that are there, they qualify prior to proposing just a flat price, so they know the project. We don't end up getting hit with a lot of change orders that we typically see under a, just a flat bid, low bid price competitive procurement process. So we have, the request on the first one is Resolution 2526-10, which adopts those findings of fact in relation to the Tiger High and Tualatin High restroom complexes that we're proposing to build next summer. So that's the initial ask on that. We did hold a meeting for, a public hearing on the afternoon of November 25th for all three of the proposals that will be coming forth to you tonight. No one attended either of them, so we had no objections to the process under all of those. So the request is that we, that the board approves Resolution 2526-10 in the finding of facts for exemption from competitive bidding for the high school restroom project.
Are there any questions?
I would just like to say, I'm a huge fan of this process. When I saw what happened when we had the bond that passed, 2006, '07?
Oh, yes.
And we did not have this process. We ended up with some significant problems in some of the bills. When we were able to do this process in the 2016 bond, we had a much more successful build season, so I like this process a lot.
Did you say '06, '07?
For sure did, for sure did, and we all...
Come on, it can't be too late, it's not too late.
No. I move to approve Resolution 2526-10, adopting findings of fact, granting exemption from competitive bidding for Tiger High and Tualatin High restroom project by means of qualifications plus a bid and authorizing selection by request for proposals.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Rubin and seconded by Director Jaimez, that we approve Resolution 2526-10, adopting findings of fact, granting exemption from competitive bidding for Tiger High and Tualatin High restroom project by means of qualifications plus a bid and authorizing selection by request for proposals. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Number two on the docket is a request for approval of Resolution 2526-11 for exemption from competitive bidding for 2026 HVAC equipment replacement project. That project will happen at CFT, Alberta Rider, Metzger, Tualatin Elementary, and Tiger High School to replace 25 HVAC units. Again, November 25th, we had a public hearing, which no one attended, and we believe the finding of facts, the findings of facts still are the same for this one as well, that it will provide a better result for the district.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-11, adopting findings of fact, granting exemption from competitive bidding for the 2026 HVAC equipment replacement project by means of qualifications plus a bid and authorizing selection by request for proposals.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Jaimez, seconded by Director Miles, that we approve Resolution 2526-11, adopting findings of fact, granting exemption from competitive bidding for the 2026 HVAC equipment replacement project by means of qualifications plus a bid and authorizing selection by request for proposals. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And finally...
And finally, the request is to approve Resolution 2526-12 for an exemption from competitive bidding for the Deer Creek Elementary Security and Infrastructure Upgrade Project. Again, same thing, November 25th, we had a public hearing that no one, no attendees attended, and the findings of fact support the bid plus qualification process as opposed to the regular competitive bidding procurement process.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-12, adopting findings of fact, granting exemption from competitive bidding for Deer Creek Elementary Security and Infrastructure by means of qualifications plus a bid and authorizing selection by request for proposals.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Rubin and seconded by Director Jaimez, that we approve Resolution 2526-12, adopting findings of fact, granting exemption from competitive bidding for Deer Creek Elementary Security and Infrastructure by means of qualifications plus a bid and authorizing selection by request for proposals. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Go build things. And with that, and with that, at 9:15 PM, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all, everybody. Have a good evening.